Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton County Council meeting, November 20th, 2025. Mr. Brown, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Ms. Chafniski, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Capora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Ferretto? Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present except Mr. Greford.
Thank you. Next, can we please have... All right, let's see. November 6th, 2025 minutes will be approved at the next meeting. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 budget meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have courtesy of the floor, five-minute limit. And we have three people. Please state your name and your town of residence. First, we have Ramon Negron Walters.
Hello, good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Ramon Negron Walter. I'm a resident of Easton. I work here in Easton. And I participate in the community activities. I was a coach as well for my daughter's basketball teams here in Easton. I am here as a whistleblower because I understand that there are no other whistleblowers that are going to speak in regards to my concerns. I'm whistleblowing on the fact that there is no monitoring of court-appointed psychologists within custody affairs. It has severely affected my daughters, as well as my relationship. Though I raised my children, so we still have a strong relationship, thank God. But I had requested co-parenting therapy for the mother of my children and myself to help us, not put my children in the middle or to be used as a pawn or to be weaponized. And the exact opposite has occurred after seeing a co-parenting psychologist that was supposed to help us. Dr. Phil Kenny is his name. And we were meant to have co-parenting therapy. And I noticed that things were all one-sided. Not only that, my own daughters would tell me that something was wrong here, that they did not trust him, that he was acting weird, and that they were having private meetings with them and along with the mother of my children. I did actually find out that that was true. I actually called them, just so happened to pass by his job. And again, the meeting, I guess, was a secret meeting with the mother. And my children were in the other room. This doctor called CYS on me multiple times. CYS came to my house, found no evidence of anything. I mean, I raised my children their whole life. And he kept calling every single week until a third person came to my house, said he's being biased toward you. And I was in tears. I already knew that this was true. I hadn't seen my children. He wasn't reporting any violations on the other side. And then he, when I confronted him about this, along with other things that he mentioned to me, such as, you know, people like you remind me of the client that I'm currently dealing with, who is in critical condition due to shooting himself. I don't know what his previous clients are, but I found it very unprofessional, very unethical. I feel like he's using dark psychology. He then, when I confronted him about numerous things, which I do have documented, I've documented everything, he said he's going to speak badly about me, say that I'm a malcontent father, along with other things, to the master attorney and judges. When I came here for modifications, I spoke in front of Breonna Gohmert. I noticed that that was true. I was treated extremely unfairly, yelled at, unprofessionally. Saying things that I called my daughters fat, that I said they had pimples on them, just absurd things. And there are no cameras inside the master attorney's office, so it's hard for me to prove what she did. But I can, because every court order that was violated was never enforced. This has trickled down to the judges. Master Breonna Gohmert would already flag me every single petition that I put in because my daughters are truant now, for two years. Two years truant, not just one, two. My daughters are straight A students, they're honorable students. I would take them to school. They don't attend school. A lot of it obviously falls into the mother's responsibility to take them. But I cannot, I don't know what's going on with her. All I know is that when they were with me, I took very good care of my children. Now, I feel like there is an implicit bias in the courthouse. In almost, in total, I have met some good people that are working on reviewing the case. But it's taken me nearly a year and a half, almost two years, and my daughters are failing school. They're not going. They are not listening to their mother. They're just not, they're just simply not going. I'm speaking with the director of CYS, Wanda, or Susan. And I'm asking her to really take a look into what Dr. Phil was reporting and why so many times, and why ultimately I was validated, I still don't know. Okay, thank you. Like I said, I'm here for my children. My priority is to get them in school as soon as possible, by tomorrow if I could, but I can't. You know, it's very tough. I've been, I feel like, threatened if I keep advocating. I've taken the chains of levels of command. This is what brings me here today in front of all of you. And I hope things can get better for my children. And I really hope this isn't a regular occurrence. I feel that they should monitor what a psychologist can do. You know, dark psychology is real. Telling someone that their client had shot themselves who's similar to you, you know, it almost implants a seed. When I confronted him, he did remove himself. Everyone has removed themselves from my case. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tara Zerinski.
Thank you. My name is Tara Zerinski. I live at 1341 Linden Street, Bethlehem, PA. Madam President, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Tonight, I wanted to address council as the county comptroller. I want to commend the administration for their continued commitment for fiscal responsibility and counsel on their questioning of the budget. After attending several budget hearings, though, I'm compelled to address the significant concerns with the proposed 2026 budget and the ordinance bill number 895, which seeks to raise the fund balance requirement for financial stabilization to 10% of the general fund. Let's call this what it is. It's an unfunded mandate that fails to meet our county's statutory and moral obligations while burdening future administrations and misleading the public on fiscal stabilization. Of course, responsible fiscal management is critical. And while I'm not averse to risk mitigation, inflating the minimum fund balance to 10% creates an arbitrary hurdle that is out of step with the intent of GASP. The policy outlines that fund balance is comprised of non-spendable restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned amounts. However, the intent of GASP 54 is clarity and transparency, not artificial inflation of reserves for optics over substance. Council President Ms. Vargo Hefner stated in response to Mr. Brown's questioning that the delayed implementation to January of 2027 is necessary because the budget would be otherwise immediately imbalanced. Yet this is clear evidence that council is kicking the can down the road. Instituting a policy that you acknowledge cannot be met this year does nothing but create an unfunded mandate to be reckoned with by the next administration, ensuring they start on shaky ground, not stable footing. More troubling still, we are contemplating this ordinance in a budget year that slashes essential services, fails to fund our obligation, and burdens not only the future administration, but this county council with the responsibility to increase revenue. The LEAP program, a requirement under Pennsylvania Code, Chapter 95.243, for providing supervised treatment services in our prisons, has been cut effective December 31st, 2025, as has the Pine Brook Anger Management and Parenting Program, both of which are court-ordered and necessary for child visitation and rehabilitation. The county has also ceased funding the pension fund since September and is funding neither the pension nor the retiree healthcare benefits in this budget. This pension alone requires $11 to $12 million per year. And while it's funded around 90%, according to an actuarial table, it cannot remain unfunded forever. So too, the budget has $0 allocated towards a county contribution to Greysdale. And although I know this number is changing daily, I can guarantee it is more than zero. The OSI and farmland preservation programs are also left unfunded as Northampton County's contribution to Act 167 Stormwater Management Plan is as well. While ensuring our retirement funds and Greysdale are moral obligations, funding our corrections and treatment programs are statutory ones. In full transparency, we must ask how the current revenue will support funding these line items in subsequent years without new sources of revenue. The budget, and even what is perceived as a solution with the 10% increase, neither fulfills the moral or statutory obligations, which could result in both legal jeopardy and long-term financial instability, with an estimated budgetary shortfall of $14.8 million going into 2027 that will be exacerbated by the required 10% minimum of approximately $8 million mandated to fund the emergency stabilization fund. If you want to make sure that the next council and the next administration are on solid ground, then you cannot pass this unfunded mandate and need to ask some difficult questions about how these programs will get funded. By codifying a 10% fund balance in law, while failing to meet both the statutory program funding and required retirement contributions, you are leaving a legacy of an even larger compounded shortfall to make up in 2027, knowingly passing on the consequences to your successors. This is not good governance. It is an act of willful neglect. This council must take responsibility for its decisions today, and I trust that you want what is good for the county, as I do. And I hope that you will choose the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Peters.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Peters. I'm the president of the Northampton County Fire Chiefs Association. Members of county council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak regarding the critical public safety communication issues affecting Northampton County. I am here on behalf of all three, the police association, the ambulance association, and the fire chiefs. At two prior budget meetings, I requested financial assistance to support the purchase of radios needed for the county's new system. I am here again respectfully to ask county to consider providing some level of support to help offset the cost of approximately 1,100 radios totaling 19.5 million. Many departments are seeking grants and seeking municipal assistance. However, not all departments are eligible or successful. Any amount of support from the county would significantly alleviate the strain on our agencies. Recent incidents highlight why this investment is urgent. During the Heights Market Fire in Bethlehem Township, units operating in the basement experienced communication failures and could not reliably transmit. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated event. These issues are occurring countywide, demonstrating that the current system can no longer meet our operational needs. Motorola has offered a bulk purchase discount for Northampton County and its agencies. While specific details are still forthcoming, this opportunity might help reduce the financial burden if the county is able to participate. Additionally, as of November 10th, the text paging service used across the county has been offline due to issues on their end, the provider's end. This outage has disrupted critical alerting and communication for agencies that rely on this service. Emergency management officials have advised that a solution is being developed, but it will take more time to implement. Finally, the associations wish to express concerns about a lack of engagement and responsiveness from parts of the emergency management administration. Field units frequently request operational changes intended to improve safety and efficiency on incidents. Excuse me. Yet those requests are often delayed or denied, sometimes for six months or more. We have asked for more improved communication, collaboration, and responsiveness so we can better serve the residents of this county. In closing, our goal is simple, to ensure that the police, fire, and EMS personnel have the reliable tools and support we need to protect the community. We are asking for the county's partnership as we address these critical communication challenges. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening? Okay, hearing none. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
The chief left. I wanted to inform the chief that there are a number of departments who are going to receive money for radios from our public safety grant program in this budget. So it's important that he knows that, so I'll make sure that that gets communicated to him. Do you have any, that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. Can you address some of the concerns that Ms. Zerinski just spoke about?
For example, the ones at the prison?
Yes.
Well, she's mistaken about, and it's to be expected, there's a learning curve. She's mistaken about the LEAP program being required. I really like the LEAP program. I think most of you here have heard me speak about it in public before. Unfortunately, it started as a grant program. There was a state grant that we got through the workforce board to start it. When that grant ran out, we continued to fund it at about a half a million dollars a year. But unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your perspective, with our census at the prison being as low as it is, and it's not a lot of people at the prison right now, there are only 11 people enrolled in that program. So it just wasn't worth investing a half a million dollars a year in it going forward. And as I said, it's not statutorily mandated. With respect to the Pine Brook services, there's some disagreement about whether those are required to be provided under the law. I've looked at it myself. But with that being said, Mr. Dunstan and I looked at the prison's budget as proposed, and we can move money down from the healthcare line item to fund the Pine Brook program, Pine Brook programming in the prison next year if it's determined by the county executive and the prison officials that it's necessary under the law. You're welcome.
Do you have any other report?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into old business, public hearing of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 526-210, also known as the Northampton County Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54, Fund Balance Policy Ordinance. Mr.s Brown and Capora introduced this ordinance at the November 6th, 2025 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, is there any discussion from council? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to be supporting this initiative and this ordinance. I believe Mr. Kraft last night made some very good comments, very good points. If we go back and look at those, at the end of the day, I think what we're going to be doing is putting council, and quite frankly, our taxpayers, in a public policy and fiscal noose if we do this, if we go along with this plan of action here. I understand the initial overall concern. But if we are going to be hampering future councils, we're going to be hampering future administrations, inevitably, we're going to be hampering our taxpayers in some way, shape, or form. I think as we have a new council that's going to be coming in, new administration as well, we need to take things one step at a time. And again, I think this puts us in a financial and public policy noose. I will not be supporting this.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bind because I can understand why council wants to do this. We've had less than full success in working with the administration on open lines communication when it came to money, what was appropriated, where it's been spent, where we intended it to be spent. This fund would be taxpayer money, but it would be accessible to the county executives. It's not something that can't be used, except if it's used, it has to be specific and explained as to where it's going, not just sloshed around in the general fund. But having said that, I agree with the concerns that Ms. Zerinski put forward and that I've heard mentioned by Messrs. Kraft and Warren, that it's a problem as far as revenue goes. This budget, personally, I find the budget unrealistic, the way it's been proposed to us. And I think it's good to necessitate this council acting on increasing the revenues coming into the county. But I would like to make an amendment, amend this to, from 10% to 7%. I can see why we need to increase it, but at the same time, I think 10% is a bit of a reach. So I'd like to put forward that motion to amend.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second? There's a second? Is there any discussion on the amendment? I guess, you know, Mr. Heckman, I appreciate that. And my thought is, in comment to Ms. Zerinski's words, is that first of all, this is not an unfunded mandate. This is our job as council to be budgetarian legislative. The intention behind this is not to hostage a specific administration. By not doing this, we are setting up for failure because this budget is absolutely unmanageable. And I think we haven't seen the worst of it yet. But I agree that maybe a year is not long enough, and maybe 10% is too much. And if we need to incrementally get there, then I'm in favor of supporting your amendment. But something has to be done that it's not allowed to get to bare bones again and give this next administration and group time to get some solid footing. Any other comments or discussion? Call for a vote on the amendment.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Capora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Giovanni?
No.
The motion fails by a vote of three to five.
Amendment fails. Is there any further discussion on the proposal, on the ordinance? Mr. Brown? Just a minute, Mr. Heckman. Mr. Brown is the floor.
That's fine.
Well, I appreciate the comptroller's comments and council's comments. When this stabilization was created, there was a restriction that only council would have the authority to release the funds and not... I don't know exactly when, but it was right after this administration came in, that ordinance was changed and that language changed. And I believe the comptroller was a member of council at that time. That change has allowed that stabilization fund to be drained. So actually, the incoming administration is inheriting the decisions that were made by prior councils moving forward. The intent of the stabilization, I believe we'd be having a very different conversation if the state budget had not passed in the past couple of weeks to free up the cash we needed. Two weeks ago, we had an audience saying that they were going to have to shut down. If we couldn't do that, we had 170 employees that were about to be furloughed potentially, or for months had that hanging over their head. That is the intent of the stabilization. It's not meant to balance a budget. It's not meant to be used for any other services other than in an emergency when the county needs money. The state budget impasse is a good example. When we've had hurricanes and such that did damage to properties and so on and so forth, that we need to reach in and have monies available. That is the intent of the stabilization. It is not intended to balance a budget. While I'm hearing now that we don't want to do this, I didn't really hear a lot of complaints when the current administration withdrew $11.8 million to balance the budget. Where did it go? I don't know. Where did all the other monies go? The complaints we're hearing about the future administration and future councils, you're inheriting this administration's eight years of financial management, if you want to call that. I agree that this budget is in dire straits. I agree with the comment that you haven't even seen the worst of it. You can expect, I would say, probably one of the shoe drops will be come January 15th, when you have to provide $10 or $15 million into the Greysdale fund to balance that deficit loss, which is not funded for in the current budget. No line item, no fund. So yeah, it's ugly, but that does not change the need to have the stabilization healthy and funded. And if it takes an ordinance like this in order to make sure the monies are there so that next year, if you run into a state impasse again, what are you going to do? That's what the monies are for. So I agree with the comptroller's comments that it's, the moral obligation is so and so forth. Actually, that is the moral obligation, I believe, of the stabilization fund and of this body. And we heard it over the last couple of months during the course of these impasses, both federal and state impasses. So I supported the conversation about increasing this to 10%. The incoming executive and administration will have a year to figure it out, like all administrations have to, whether it be this or the litany of other issues that are facing the county financially. These are issues that unfortunately, as comptroller, were not addressed. That's part of the comptroller's job, to dig in and find out where there are issues and bring them to the forefront. All we heard were hotel tax reports and so on and so forth. So I'm going to support this, and I'll ask the rest of council to support it also.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
Oh, no, I just wanted to check, the vote on the amendment was what, five to four? I mean, five to three, was it?
Five to three.
Five to three again. Yeah, I guess the problem I'm having is... This isn't about personalities, it's about policy, it's about county. Frankly, I don't give a camel's lump who the executive is or who's on council. Every council is responsible for its actions. The new council, they have to make tough decisions like we all have. I've been making those decisions since 1990. Sometimes you feel like you were left with a bag of crops. And sometimes you feel all the people actually cared. But I'm concerned about the county, I'm concerned about the people, and I'm concerned about the...
the taxpayer because frankly, I've been saying taxes from the past century, property taxes, and the county tax is actually a bargain of the bunch. It's the, excuse me, it's the school tax that tells you it's out of control, and even the municipal taxes are crazy. So I, I propose this as a compromise, and it was defeated, and that's fine. My concern is that I agree with what was said about the budget. I've looked through it myself over and over and over again, and of all the budgets I've seen, this one is the most unrealistic going forward. I don't see how I can vote to pass it unless I propose that we bring in more revenue. In regards to what Mr. Brown said, I, that creates a problem because I see the stabilization fund as, I'm not worried so much about the state and the central government, could they do this nonsense again? Sure, because we're still partisan now, and so authoritarian leaning with our executive branches that, you know, it's a choir. Anything you want, I say yes, anything you want, I say no. I'm concerned about the county going forward. So I'm reluctantly, and I mean reluctantly, not going to support the 10%, but because if we did, then I would feel that we'd have to have a tax increase. And frankly, we may have, I never voted for one, but we may have to have one anyway, if we really are so concerned as we claim that we are. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Keegan?
I have a question for Mr. Brown. Would you vote yes to raise taxes if we had to do that, for all the things that you want? To raise taxes? So then, what do you propose that we do?
What in front of you and that we have to deal with, and this is just one component of it. This is the result of years of financial mismanagement. I've been blowing that horn at least since I've been on this council, and now you're going to have to make the tough decisions over the budget going forward. And no, I will not support a tax increase for this.
The only other thing I would say is, you know, Mr. Heckman's amendment came first. I went home, I thought about this. I stand by this proposal, I do. And I just see it as a way, again, not to hold anybody hostage, but in the future, not to allow it to get this low again. But I did hear people's concerns about letting the next administration get off on a fair footing, and I would make an amendment, if people would be willing to support it, to change the date of taking effect to January 1st, 2028. That would give the administration two years to figure out what it wants to do, how it can raise revenue, look at the budget, and give it time. We're going to have to raise taxes anyway. I would say just plan on it. It's coming, whether it comes this year, next year, the year after. I hope we don't have to do it that high, but hopefully, we could find other ways to get revenue, or we're going to have to make serious cuts. And so if I propose, I'd like to make an amendment to change the effect date to 2028. Is there a second on that motion? Amendment dies for no second. All right. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Kraft?
No.
Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Amendment fails by a vote of four to four. Thank you. Next, we have, any other old business anyone wants us to discuss? New business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the 2025 county budget, community and economic development, community economic, community development grants, administration hazmat, Act 1265, administration task force equipment, sheriff, court administration, problem-solving courts, public works, Bridges P. 3, public works 2013, 2019, bond project closeout, human services, homeless assistance, human services development fund, human services grants, human services children, youth, and families, human services area agency on aging, human services health choices, human services mental health, human services developmental programs, human services early intervention, human services drug and alcohol, human services drug and alcohol opioid. Someone sponsor the ordinance?
Madam President, I'll sponsor.
Second sponsor?
Second.
Hearing, debate, possible vote held on December 4th, 2025 meeting. Next, we have an introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the real estate tax mileage rate in the County of Northampton, County for, County of Northampton for year 2026. Sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Kraft will sponsor, Kupora will second. Thank you. Indicate the public hearing, debate, and possible vote held at the December 4th, 2025 meeting. Next, we have consideration of an executive's appointment resolution, drug and alcohol advisory board. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
Yes, President. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individual shall be confirmed in their appointment as indicated hereafter. Drug and alcohol advisory board appointment Cindy Kerschel, 1034 Wyonheart Drive, Walnutport, PA, 18088. Term to expire 6/30/27.
Any discussion on the matter? This was discussed at personnel last night. Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Heckman?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next, we have consideration of personnel request resolutions, court administration. First, we have conference officers. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to read for one.
All of that, all these?
Well, let me.
Is there a way to, readers digest this?
Well, unfortunately, do they all have to be entered into the record? So I'll tell you what, you start with the first one, and I'll spread the wealth. We'll have everybody take a turn. How's that?
Sounds like a plan.
Save you. Hi, I don't think we need a discussion, we're ready. Do we need to discuss this one? Court officers, conference officers. You can stay there.
It's not very regular for them to participate at this point.
Well, they're here if we have, we don't need you to.
Just in case.
Just in case, any questions, we'll answer.
All right. I don't think we have any, but if we do, we'll call you up. How's that? Mr. Giovanni, go ahead.
It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time conference officers, one, pay grade CP-GR22-1-A, salary 48,107, in the office of the court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-1-A, salary 53,884, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further, it is further resolved by Northampton County Council that three positions of full-time conference officers, officer one, pay grade CP-CR-GR22-2-B, salary 50,185, in the office of the court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-2-B, salary 56,309, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the positions of four full-time conference officer one, pay grade CP-GR22-4-D, salary 54,621, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-4-D, salary 61,490, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time conference officers, officer one, pay grade CP-GR22-9-I, salary 67,271, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-9-I, salary 76,704, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one position of full-time conference officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-2-B, salary 57,324, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-2-B, salary 61,738, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that two positions of full-time conference officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-7-G, salary 70,951, in the officer, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-7-G, salary 76,937, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one position of full-time conference officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-8-H, salary 74,054, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-H, that, that eight, that eight, salary 80,438, effective November 21st, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the juvenile probation. Can you do another one?
Yep. I'll do another one, yeah. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of three full-time juvenile probation officers, one, pay grade CP-GR22-1-A, salary 48,107, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-1-A, salary 53,884, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of four full-time juvenile protection officer one, pay grade CP-GR22-2-B, salary 50,185, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-2-B, salary 56,309, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation officer one, pay grade CP-GR22-3-C, salary 52,355, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-3-C, salary 58,843, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation officer one, pay grade CP-GR22-9-I, salary 67,271, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR23-9-I, salary 76,704, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time juvenile probation officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-1-A, salary 54,940, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-1-A, salary 59,079, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-2-B, salary 57,324, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-2-B, salary 61,738, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-5-E, salary 65,138, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-5-E, salary 70,453, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-8-H, salary 74,054, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grades CS-GR25-8-H, salary 80,438, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time juvenile probation officer two, pay grade CP-GR25-9-I, salary 76,938, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-9-I, salary 84,099, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile intake officer, pay grade CP-GR25-5-E, salary 65,138, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-5-E, salary 70,453, effective 21, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile intake officer, pay grade CP-GR25-9-I, salary 76,938, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR25-9-I, salary 84,099, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time juvenile probation supervisor, pay grade CS-GR26-6-F, salary 77,94, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR27-7-G, salary 84,357, effective November 21st, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time deputy chief juvenile probation officer, pay grade CS-GR27-8-H, salary 88,195, in the office of court administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade CS-GR28-7-G, salary 88,330, effective November 21st, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Next, we have adult probation. You want to keep going? We want a break.
Up to you. I don't care.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown. I'll take this one.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash one A, salary forty-eight one oh seven, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three one A, salary fifty-three eight four, eight four, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of seven full-time adult probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash two B, salary fifty-thousand one eighty-five, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash two B, salary fifty-six three oh nine, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the positions of three full-time adult probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash four D, salary fifty-four six twenty-one, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash four D, salary sixty-one thousand four hundred and ninety, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash six F, salary fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash six dash F, salary sixty-seven one forty-nine, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash three C, salary fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash three dash C, salary sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five four D, salary sixty-two thousand four seventeen, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash four D, salary sixty-seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash five E, salary sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash five E, salary seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the positions of three full-time adult probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash eight H, salary seventy-four thousand fifty-four dollars, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash eight dash H, salary eighty thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the positions of two full-time adult probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash nine I, salary seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash nine I, salary eighty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time adult probation supervisor, pay grade C S G R twenty-six dash eight H, salary eighty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-seven dash seven dash G, salary eighty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the positions of one full-time deputy chief adult probation officer, pay grade C S G R twenty-seven dash nine I, salary ninety-two thousand two hundred and nine dollars, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-eight eight H, salary ninety-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Thanks. Next, we have DUI probation officers. Mr. Kupora?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time DUI probation officer, one, pay grade C P dash G R twenty-three dash three dash C, salary fifty-four thousand seven twenty-nine, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S dash G R twenty-three dash three dash C, salary fifty-eight thousand eight forty-three, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time DUI probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-three dash five dash E, salary fifty-nine thousand five eighty-three, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S dash G R twenty-three dash five dash E, salary sixty-four thousand two fifty-eight, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time DUI probation officer, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-three dash eight dash H, salary sixty-seven thousand seven sixteen, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash eight dash H, salary seventy-three thousand three sixty-five, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time DUI probation officer, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash five dash E, salary sixty-five thousand one thirty-eight, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash five dash E, salary seventy thousand four fifty-three, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Next, we have court officers. Mr. Kupora, will you continue?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash one dash A, salary fifty-four thousand nine forty, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash one dash A, salary fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash two dash B, salary fifty-seven thousand three twenty-four, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash two dash B, salary sixty-one thousand seven thirty-eight, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash three dash C, salary fifty-nine thousand eight fifteen, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash three dash C, salary sixty-four thousand five sixteen, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash five dash E, salary sixty-five thousand one thirty-eight, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash five dash E, salary seventy thousand four fifty-three, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-five dash six dash F, salary sixty-seven thousand nine seventy-nine, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five dash six dash F, salary seventy-three thousand six twenty-four, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial administrative case officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash one dash A, salary forty-eight thousand one oh seven, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash one dash A, salary fifty-three thousand eight eight four, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time pre-trial administrative case officer, pay grade C P G R twenty-two dash three dash C, salary fifty-two thousand three fifty-five, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-three dash three dash C, salary fifty-eight thousand eight forty-three, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time lead judicial secretary, pay grade C S G R twenty-nine dash I, salary sixty-six thousand eight eleven, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-two dash eight dash H, salary seventy thousand sixty-four, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the one position, the position of three, full-time law clerk, pay grade C E G R O three, one dash A, salary sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C E dash G R O three dash three dash C, salary seventy-four thousand seventy, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time law clerk, pay grade C E G R O three dash two dash B, salary seventy thousand eight eighty, in the Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C E G R O three dash three dash C, salary seventy-four thousand seventy, effective November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
And next, we have, is it court officers, or do we just do that? Domestic Relations Section and Court Administration. Ms. Keegan, will you take that one?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time D R S Financial Analyst, one, pay grade C P G R twenty-five one A, salary fifty-four thousand nine hundred and forty, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five one A, salary fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine dollars, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Here, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time D R S Financial Analyst, two, pay grade C P G R twenty-six nine I, salary eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-one, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-six seven G, salary eighty thousand five hundred and sixty-three, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Is that a typo? Is that a typo? You're raising that two hundred dollars? Or a hundred dollars? Why don't you just write from eighty thousand four seventy-one to eighty thousand five sixty-three?
If that's what the grade is...
And everything else was fourteen percent. Is that a typo? Is that a typo? Okay.
Moving on. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Deputy Director of Domestic Relations, pay grade C S G R twenty-nine two B, salary seventy-four thousand two hundred and twenty, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-nine five A, salary eighty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, effective nine, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Community Service Coordinator, pay grade C P G R twenty-five five E, salary sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R twenty-five five E, salary seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-three, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Executive Secretary, Court Administration, pay grade C S G R nineteen four D, salary fifty-one thousand one hundred and forty-six, in the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R nineteen seven G, salary fifty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council, the position of one full-time Custody Master, pay grade C E G R zero four two B, salary eighty-five thousand two hundred and eleven, in the Office of Court Administration, that be, shall be reclassified to pay grade C E G R zero four five E, salary ninety-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Court Fiscal Administrator, pay grade C S G R thirty-seven G, salary ninety-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-one, and the Office of Court Administration, shall be reclassified to pay grade C S G R thirty-nine I, salary a hundred and five thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven, effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Mr. Kraft?
Well, yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, you're supposed to wait till this point in the...
Well, I just saw it, and it was, you know, like a, like a eight-dollar change, and everybody else is getting ten thousand dollar raises, and I just think someone in the office is going to be very disgruntled, that's all.
Well, but it looks like they're changing a whole...
Whole thing, yeah.
...place where it goes.
So, yeah, so that, that was all, if, when I saw the difference in the price, you know, they were all that small. It would be nice, but...
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank God.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Judge Dally, for being present. If your folks could stay, because I think the next one, we had a question on last night, and you weren't here to answer that question for us, or, um, next, we have consideration of a two thousand twenty-six court cost increase resolution. Mr. Brown will introduce.
Whereas Northampton County Resolution Number seventeen dash seventy-nine provides that the fees charged by agencies and offices of Northampton County shall be set by the Northampton County Council by means of a resolution at such times and at such rates as deemed necessary, and whereas on October one, two thousand twenty-five, the court order was issued authorizing court cost increases to take effect January one, two thousand twenty-six, and whereas included in the court order were the fee schedule and the state-county payment distribution table, see Exhibit A. Now, therefore, be it resolved that any other fee schedule inconsistent herewith is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects the attached fee schedule.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? I think last night, we just wanted some clarification. I assume this is just coming from the state?
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of Administrative Code, Article thirteen, Contract Resolution, Slate Belt... Thank you.
Thank you.
Slate Belt Plumbing, Heating and Electric. Mr. Brown, will you introduce?
Whereas Northampton County Administrative Code, Article thirteen, Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section thirteen fifteen, Contracts and Agreements, See One, requires approval of County Council for any contract exceeding a hundred thousand dollars, which was awarded using the competitive negotiation, negotiation after competitive sealed bidding and non-competitive negotiation, source selection methods for contracts with renewal clause of the entire potential payout of all renewal clauses or exercises under the terms of the contract must be considered when determining of council approval is necessary, and whereas on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, Northampton County Council received a request from the County Executive for County Council to adopt the resolution endorsing a contract with Slate Belt Plumbing, Heating and Electric, to serve as the electrical maintenance contract for highway interchanges for the Bridge Division for a term of three years at a total cost of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars per year, estimate actual cost determined by services rendered. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the County Executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve the contract with Slate Belt Plumbing, Heating and Electric.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say they're doing a great job, because years passed, we had things about all the lights being out on twenty-two, if you remember that, and, uh, you know, it's nice that they're all on now. Well, I'd just like to say they're doing a great job, because years past, we had things about all the lights being out on 22, if you remember that, and, you know, it's nice that they're all on now, so I think they're doing a great job.
Anything else? Call for the vote. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Kupora.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution of establishing a public database for blighted properties. Mr. Warren, will you introduce?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the introduction of blighted properties onto a block neighborhood or municipality within Northampton County can lead to a downward spiral of disinvestment, and whereas blight affects all communities in Northampton County, and currently, there is no statewide database of blighted properties to aid local municipalities with the task of blighted, I'm sorry, task of blight remediation, and whereas, as a result, blighted properties are easy targets for absentee property owners to simply hold the properties for future sale without rectifying the blight, and whereas blighted properties and absentee landlords are becoming more and more prevalent within Northampton County, and whereas counties across the United States and Pennsylvania have implemented public databases that address blight and track severe property maintenance code violations within municipalities, whereas the establishment of a public database would give local governments in Northampton County a tool to clean up neighborhoods and protect individuals, and whereas mitigation of these blighted properties may lead to economic development opportunities and other benefits, such as stabilizing and increasing the tax base, supporting local construction and trade jobs, maintaining a community fabric by retaining residents, businesses, and local jobs, encouraging existing owners to make improvements to their properties, and creating new housing and retail. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council as follows. One, Northampton County shall create a public countywide blighted property database system using property code violations from all municipalities within Northampton County. Two, this blighted property database for Northampton County shall be managed by the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development, as this database registry shall contain property maintenance code violation reports as filed by municipalities within Northampton County. Three, this blighted property database for Northampton County would be a tool allowing Northampton County, along with appropriate state agencies, upon any action by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, enacting a blighted property database to begin remediation of blight and avoid having owners of blighted properties to continue in Northampton County and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, I wasn't here for this discussion.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, Ron, go ahead.
How much is this, how much is this going to cost?
Mr. Heckman, we don't know yet. This resolution is simply an intent for this council and county to begin the process of initiating such a database, and the reason for me introducing this was talking to various government officials from my district, from Catasauqua to Northampton, to Hanover Township, to the Borough of Nazareth, talking to folks about how do we clean up our municipalities, and how do we address absentee landlords, properties that have remained vacant for so long, where there is so much potential within municipalities to be able to redevelop, develop, and whether we're expanding our tax base, providing new housing opportunities, new retail opportunities. To answer your question, as I have, we're not sure at this point, and it is my hope to work with the future council, to also work with the new administration coming in, to get this done, because this council, quite frankly, hasn't embarked on an initiative like this. I think it's high time that this council does embark on this, simply for the fact that we need to address blighted properties in an aging community, like Northampton County is. I mean, we have an aging housing stock, not getting any younger, and we have a ton of properties throughout this county that are being neglected, and absentee landlord and property owners who couldn't care less. This is an initiative that I think could really get the ball moving in terms of addressing blighted property and folks that have a ton of code violations, so I hope I answered your question, Mr. Heckman.
Okay, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the answer is no, we don't know what it'll cost. We know it'll take up staff time. I'm going to oppose this, not because I think it's a terrible idea, but because we have aging people in this county who we don't know if we're going to be able to keep grayscale afloat if we don't invest more in it and invest in staff. I have a, our required and needed services for safety and security are safety net, which is why we exist, the safety net of services. We're barely able to cover that. I mean, we have an infinite need in finite resources. Community and economic development, I was there in administration when it was created, and there's a lot of discussion as to why it was actually made a department, but it's not a mandated service. And the idea of doing this is nice, but, you know, municipalities should be, I don't want us to get into zoning and code enforcement or anything like that, and our deal has been about people. Now, maybe the new council will say, oh, no, you know, we want to expand, we want to build the empire, because to me, this is more empire building than anything else. If some, if a township sees there's blighted properties, deal with it. You have zoning codes, you have all these things. Now, you want the county to get involved in that, too? I mean, good God almighty, I don't know what else we're going to do. At one point, we wanted to be code folks for the Upper Mount Bethel projects, you know, we would decide what's a valuable project and what isn't. I mean, I think we're getting far, far afield, in my opinion, of what the county government level is all about, so I can't support this. I'm not, I just don't see us running around doing this at a time when we're all basically discussing how we, how we don't have enough money. With this bare bones budget, and the executive, the executive-elect even came up and addressed that, and we want to take on a whole new endeavor that really isn't required, because it's a good idea, but is it? And so I'll be a no on this at this time. Thank you.
Ken, then you, John.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go. Thanks for not answering his question on what it was going to cost, but I, too, I'm agreeing with you, Ron. This is overreaching. This is not in our purview. We have, being someone that was on the zoning board and planning commissions and everything for the city and for everybody in municipality, it's their responsibility. We don't set zoning codes, we don't set those laws, they're nothing to do with us. And, you know, I understand your intent, have a database, but they should have their own database, you know? I mean, Dixie's the classic example of a place that just went to hell for 40 years, and nobody did anything, and local municipality didn't do anything to correct it. That is not on us. It never has been on us. I don't think by law, we can do this. I mean, I imagine we could keep a database, but I don't think we can enforce it or have anything to do with it by the, by the powers vested in the county council. It has nothing to do with us. I mean, we can encourage people in, you know, LVEDC or some other places we're throwing money at to do it, but I just, it's not our, it's not our purview, and I am going to be a no, because it's overreaching.
Well, I want to be clear that there is absolutely no zoning codes that we are going to be embarking on or making sure that municipalities are even enforcing. This is simply the creation of a database. There's no enforcement that's going to be coming from Northampton County or the Department of Community Economic Development. I want to be very clear about that. Statewide legislation has been introduced and passed in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives in terms of House Bill 1062. It has passed to do this exact same thing statewide. It has been languishing in the Senate. Frankly, I highly doubt the Senate is going to bring it up for consideration. I recently discussed this at one of our Northampton County COG meetings, and there were a couple municipalities, they didn't even see the language that had been introduced tonight, and they said, wow, this would be a great tool for us to be able to use in the future. This isn't about us enforcing anything, it is a tool for local municipalities to be able to address blight specifically. So, to get back to what you were saying as well, Mr. Heckman, the over, quote, "overreaching" aspects of this, I don't know how a database overreaches. We're creating an initiative, something that this county hasn't done in quite some time, or ever, an initiative of addressing blight when municipalities haven't been able to do it, for whatever reason, and to be able to provide a tool. And again, no enforcement, our Community Economic Development Department is not going to be sending out fines or code violations or anything like that. We're giving folks a tool. I think that's part of our responsibility at the end of the day, to help our municipalities when we can, and in whatever manner we can do that. I don't know if we are able to, I don't know if we're able to utilize our GIS programming that we already have here. Again, this is just the intent to do this. This isn't saying we're going to spend a certain amount of money. This isn't saying that we are going to come down hard on municipalities by any stretch of the imagination, so be that as it may, this is a tool for our municipalities, and there's definitely support within our local municipal governments for it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I tend to agree, believe it or not, with Mr. Kraft, and that, one, I do think it would be a burden on the Department of Community Economic Development to try to have them do this. Two, it is a, it is within the auspices of the local municipality to address what blight is, and even just trying to find a uniform definition across municipalities as what they consider code enforcement and what they consider blight. The truth of the matter is, the local municipality is already strained, as you had indicated, they're struggling to address blight, giving them a database that, for what end, will help them. I don't really see that, quite honestly. I think the intent is good, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think, if I heard Ken correctly, I think that might be something, Jeff, to lobby LVPC on. They're in a position where they're interacting with local municipalities already on multiple factions, to see if they would actually be able to take up something like this where they already have an infrastructure technically in place to collect and report this kind of information, so I would, I'm not going to support this, not that I think it's a bad idea, I don't, I do agree that, I don't think it belongs here, not right now, but I would support a conversation with LVPC to see what they could do, and then if we had to provide funding potentially to help this initiative with them, I think that might be a better path forward, and one I could potentially support with that. But I, this one as structured, I think it's just well-intended, but I think it's not low-side in the correct place right now.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
No.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kupora.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Bills by a vote of seven, or, I'm sorry, two to six. Thank you. Are there any other new business items to discuss this evening? Next, we have council committee reports. Any reports? Mr. Giovanni.
Personnel Committee met yesterday, and we discussed executives' appointment and also the transfer of reclassifications for judicial government.
Brown.
Finance Committee met, we discussed matters that were on the agenda this evening. We heard from the Controller, she delivered several audit reports on hotel taxes and such.
Thank you. Any others? Yes.
The Energy, Environment and Land Use Committee met, and we had a really great presentation of the summary of analysis of the impacts that highlight the county's open space system, considering it a critical economic, environmental, and public health resource.
Thank you. Any other committees? Council Liaison Report. I have two. LVEDC met this week and had their regular bi-monthly meeting, reviewed our, the budget that's proposed for next year, talked about some of the funding sources that they have, and how they're trying to reach out to other people to partner. I think this is going to be discussed more next year, and I believe somebody's going to be coming to council, but they were talking about an initiative to put a tax on hotels to try to increase revenue for tourism, and I don't know enough of the details about it, it was touched on, so I think people are going to be coming in January to discuss that. The other thing that was discussed is there was a request from PP&amp;L to have them, us weigh in on a proposal. I guess there's a bill that's going in the House about increasing energy generation and what that looks like for the state of Pennsylvania. There was discussion, LVEDC decided not to take a position on it at the time, but I think there's going to be a lot more talk about it coming, because there's more need for energy, there's more need for electricity, with the data centers being the new hot buzzword, everybody's looking for that, and I think the other concern about getting involved is if Pennsylvania starts this, but the other surrounding states don't, then we're creating energy for everybody and no one else is participating, so stay tuned for that. On last Thursday, AOPC had its regional meeting to discuss criminal justice and mental health issues. Justice Dougherty was there, and the six counties in the region came and discussed some innovative programs, and also had meetings to discuss how we each individually as counties and as disciplines, we're going to keep moving forward with the plan, so that's also coming more next year. Any other liaisons? C caps this weekend, whoever's going, I'll see you there. Council Clerk Report.
Nothing.
Solicitor Report.
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?